Vamos a rezar, en el nombre del Padre y del Hijo y del Espíritu Santo, amén. Ven, Espíritu Santo, llena los corazones de tus creyentes y encendan en ellos el fuego de tu amor. Envía tu Espíritu y serán creados, y tú rehúas el rostro de la tierra. Vamos a rezar, oh Dios, que instruyó los corazones de los creyentes por la luz del Espíritu Santo, nos deje en ese mismo Espíritu para ser verdaderamente sabios y siempre alegres en su consuelo a través de Cristo nuestro Señor, amén, en el nombre del Padre y del Hijo y del Espíritu Santo, amén.
Así que estábamos por el capítulo nueve la última vez, sobre los milagros y la muerte de Saint Francis. Y hablábamos un poco acerca de esto en esta primera parte del capítulo. Chesterton está discutiendo contra la idea contemporánea de que los milagros no suceden, ¿verdad? Que los milagros son por definición imposibles, lo cual él dice que es ridículo. Los milagros son un hecho de experiencia, no puedes definirlos como imposibles, los experimentamos. Y nadie se molestaría a un atheisto por no creer que hay actos de Dios porque él no cree en Dios. Pero por el mismo token, no puedes decir que los cristianos están locos por pensar que hay actos de Dios, milagros, porque ellos creen en Dios. Por supuesto que ellos creen en actos de Dios si creen en Dios. Esto no es contrario a su forma de pensar. Y la pregunta entonces es, bueno, ¿son los milagros? Estoy en el medio de 299 ahora mismo. Él dice: "No me descontento con estas personas siendo escépticos. Estoy avergonzado de por qué los escépticos no son más escépticos. Puedo entender que están diciendo que estos detalles nunca habrían sido incluidos en un cronólogo excepto por lunáticos o mentirosos, pero en ese caso, la única infección es que el cronólogo fue escrito por mentirosos o lunáticos." Eran escritos, por ejemplo, "El fanaticismo monchista encontró fácilmente difundir el informe de que los milagros ya estaban trabajando en el túmulo de Thomas Becket." ¿Por qué no deberían decir igualmente bien: "El fanaticismo monchista encontró fácilmente difundir el sándwich de que cuatro guerreros del tribunal de Henry había asesinado a Thomas Becket en la catedral?" Eran escritos algo así: "La credulidad de la edad creía con facilidad que Joan of Arc había sido inspirado a señalar al Dauphin aunque estaba en disfraz. ¿Por qué no deberían escribir por el mismo principio: "La credulidad de la edad era tal que supondría que una mujer de puebla oscura podía conseguir una audiencia en el tribunal del Dauphin?" Así que esos son los dos ejemplos que él da, ¿verdad? Thomas Becket y Joan of Arc. Sabes, las historias de estas personas sobre estos milagros y estas historias de sorpresas son simplemente ludicrous, ¿verdad? Eso es lo que dicen los escépticos contemporáneos. Él dijo: "Bueno, está bien. Si estás diciendo que las historias de milagros no son confiables, entonces lo que estás diciendo es que el autor no es confiable." Si él puede ser tomado en cuenta por esta historia de milagros que no sucedió, o si él puede incluso ser malicioso y decir algo que sabe que no sucedió, entonces, ¿por qué confiarías en cualquier cosa que él diga, ¿verdad? ¿Por qué confías en todas las cosas que parecen normales para ti cuando no son normales, ¿verdad? Así que esa historia sobre Joan of Arc, ¿verdad? Oh, ella cuando entró en la sala de audiencia del rey y él había ocultado a sí mismo entre los juzgados, ¿verdad? Había puesto un impostor en su trono, vestido como él mismo, solo para probarla, ¿verdad? Para ver si realmente sabe quién soy. Y ella salió a la izquierda y señaló a él inmediatamente. ¡Oh, wow! Eso es un milagro, ¿verdad? Está bien. Bueno, no, seguramente eso no sucedió, eso era solo una historia, ¿verdad? Para contarle a los católicos medievales credulos que no saben cómo distinguir la verdad de la ficción. Está bien, pero me vas a decir que lo que realmente sucedió fue que esta chica de puebla recibió una audiencia con el Dauphin? Eso es tan ludicrous. El Dauphin no encuentra chicas de puebla que aparecen diciéndole que tiene que seguir campana contra el inglés. Eso no sucede. Todo lo que pasó fue un milagro. La historia completa de Joan of Arc es milagrosa. Entonces, ¿por qué aceptarías parte de ello y no el resto? Ese es un falso criterio de creencia. Y él dice lo mismo sobre Thomas Becket, ¿verdad? Si estás para decir que estas historias sobre milagros, estos cuentos de milagros sucediendo en su túmulo de sus reliquias que están siendo contadas temprano, en los años 1100, justo después de que muriera. Si estás para decir que esos son preposterosos, esos son ludicrousos, entonces, ¿por qué creerías que había sido asesinado en primer lugar? ¿Por qué creerías que el rey envió a cuatro de sus guerreros para matar a su propio bispo? Eso también es parte de la historia contada por las mismas personas que te están diciendo sobre los milagros. Entonces, si vamos a ser escépticos, entonces sean escépticos, pero sean escépticos de todo, lo cual al final es una filosofía de nonsensos. El escéptico puro es anti-humano. Es contrario a nuestra naturaleza humana desconfiar en todo. Nos detendríamos si tuviéramos que confiar en todo lo que nos dijeron o en todo lo que nosotros nos encontrábamos. Entonces, si tenemos que creer en algo, porque el escéptico puro lleva a un fin muerto. Si tenemos que creer en algo, entonces podemos creer en personas que parecen confiables. Y si parecen confiables en una cosa, entonces probablemente deberíamos confiar en que son confiables en las otras cosas también. Si encuentras el resto de la historia de Francis interesante y valiosa para tu atención, entonces probablemente deberías prestar atención a las historias de milagros también. Así que en el caso actual, cuando nos dicen que hay una historia salvaje de que Saint Francis se arrojó a sí mismo en el fuego y emergió sin miedo, ¿a qué principio preciso les están prohibido decirnos de una historia salvaje de que Saint Francis se arrojó a sí mismo al campo de los musulmanes feroces y regresó seguro? Sólo pido información, porque no veo la razonación de la cosa yo mismo. Tendré que decir que no había escrito una palabra de Saint Francis de ningún contemporáneo que fuera incapaz de creer en contar una historia milagrosa. Quizás sea todo fábricas monchistas y nunca hubo Saint Francis o Saint Thomas Becket o Joan of Arc. Esto es sin duda un reducto a la absurdidad, ¿verdad? Este es un argumento filosófico, ¿verdad? Para discutir contra tu oponente, que crees que está equivocado, tomas su principio a su conclusión. Muestro que la conclusión es ridícula, absurda, y dices: "Está bien, bueno, vine aquí solo porque empecé donde empezaste." Entonces, donde empezaste era equivocado, en otras palabras, ¿verdad? Él dice: "Esto es sin duda un reducto a la absurdidad. No hubo Saint Francis, no hubo Thomas Becket, no hubo Joan of Arc. Pero es un reducto a la absurdidad de la visión que pensaba que todos los milagros eran absurdos." Son las personas que empiezan diciendo que no pueden haber milagros, que terminan en este lugar de decir que no pudo haber existido una Francis de Assisi. Está bien, entonces supongo que vamos a desconfiar en todo lo que pasó antes de nosotros, ¿verdad? Si no lo vi, entonces no sucedió, es lo que tu principio te lleva. Y en la lógica abstracta, este método de selección conduciría a las más absurdas. Una historia intrínsecamente increíble podría significar que la autoridad no era digna de crédito. No podría significar que otras partes de su historia deben recibir con total credulidad, ¿verdad? Aquí es donde obtenemos: "Creemos en los pantalones azules, pero no creemos en la historia de un hombre saltando por su vientre, ¿verdad? Creemos en el color del globo, pero no creemos que el globo en realidad fue a la luna." ¿Por qué creeríamos en el tipo que nos dice cuál era el color del globo cuando también nos dice que fue a la luna en ese globo? Todo lo que pasa es que si la conclusión es absurda, entonces todo lo que pasa es absurdo. Sí, la historia de Saint Francis es algo fantástico. Quiero decir, los milagros de Saint Francis son fantásticos, pero tal vez sea solo porque el hombre era fantástico. Tal vez la realidad era fantástica. Esa parece ser la razón por la que la gente lo encuentra tan interesante en primer lugar. Él es fantástico, es atractivo para nosotros mostrándonos que nuestras vidas mundanas no son todo lo que hay. Gracias a Dios que nuestras vidas mundanas no son todo lo que hay. Que hay un horizonte más amplio. Me recuerda esta visión de C.S. Lewis que leímos en El gran divorcio, ¿verdad? "Hay siempre más allá, hacia las montañas del cielo, eso es lo que nos está disponible." Y los santos realmente nos dan un poco de sentido de cómo podría verse, incluso mientras estamos aquí en la tierra. Pasamos a 303 ahora. Él continúa esta línea de argumento, ¿verdad? Termina ese parágrafo superior. "¿Cuál es el uso de descartar todo eso como inconcebible cuando incluso estos trucos psíquicos comunes se vuelven perpetuamente a tocar algún objeto familiar o mantener en las manos alguna posesión personal? Por supuesto, no creo que estos trucos sean del mismo tipo que las buenas obras de un santo, salvo tal vez en el sentido de Diabolus semius dei, ¿verdad?" Así que él dice: "Miren, todos ustedes están empezando a creer en estos trucos parlantes, estos magos y estos lees de palma y estos lees de tarot y estos séances, ¿verdad? Están becoming muy populares, ¿verdad? Así que no eres un verdadero escéptico, obviamente. Te gusta creer en cosas que no entiendes, ¿verdad? Ahora, no estoy diciendo que esas cosas son como lo que hizo Saint Francis, excepto en el sentido de que el diablo es el apio de Dios, ¿verdad? Vemos esto todo el camino en el antiguo Testamento, ¿verdad? Moisés y Aaron van a Faro y el personal se convierte en un serpiente. Y los magos de Faro cambian su personal en serpientes porque trabajan para el diablo. Pero el serpiente de Dios come todos los otros serpientes. No es lo mismo, no es lo mismo, ¿verdad? Y eventualmente, los maravillos que se trabajan e imitados por los magos de Faro terminan llegando a su límite, ¿verdad? Finalmente, no son más capaces de imitar los maravillos que Dios está trabajando a través de Aaron y a través de Moisés. Y eso muestra que los milagros que Dios está trabajando son mayores, no solo en grado, sino en tipo. Ahora, puede ser difícil confiar en la diferencia, lo cual es por qué la Iglesia siempre investiga estas cosas, ¿verdad? Tal vez sí, tal vez haya alguna explicación natural. Tal vez haya alguna explicación diabólica, ¿verdad? Tal vez este sea un truco tratando de llevar a los cristianos a la otra. Y no sabemos hasta que Dios se revele realmente de una manera más definitiva. Pero miren, si vas a creer en todos estos trucos parlantes, Chesterton está diciendo, ¿por qué no creer en lo que pasó con Saint Francis? No es una pregunta de lo que creo y por qué, sino de lo que el escéptico desconfía y por qué. Y la moral para el biógrafo y el historiador práctico es que debe esperar hasta que las cosas se calmen un poco más antes de que reclame desconfiar en algo. Esto siendo así, puede elegir entre dos cursos y no sin alguna hesitación. "Y no sin alguna hesitación, he elegido entre ellos. El mejor y más boldo curso sería contar toda la historia de una manera directa, milagros y todo, como lo han contado los historiadores originales. Y a este curso sano y simple, los nuevos historiadores probablemente tendrán que volver. Pero debe recordarse que este libro es solo una introducción a Saint Francis o el estudio de Saint Francis. Aquellos que necesitan una introducción son por naturaleza extraños. Con ellos, el objetivo es hacerlos escuchar a Saint Francis en absoluto. Y al hacerlo, es perfectamente legítimo organizar perfectamente el orden de los hechos que los famosos vienen antes de los desconocidos y aquellos que pueden entender de una vez antes de aquellos tienen dificultad en la comprensión." Así que Chesterton está diciendo: "Es muy natural para alguien que no conoce a Saint Francis empezar con las cosas que hacen sentido para alguien ya en su propia vida y luego, al ponerle confianza en el narrador, decir: "Está bien. Ahora, aquí hay algunas otras cosas que tal vez has dicho que no puede ser correcta si te lo dijera primero. Ahora te estoy diciendo estas otras cosas. Y si encontraste la primera parte de la historia atractiva, entonces continúa confiando en el narrador en este punto ahora que te estoy diciendo cosas que son más maravillosas. Solo debería estar muy agradecido si este cortito y escrito contiene una línea o dos que atrae a los que estudien a Saint Francis por sí mismos. Y si lo estudian por sí mismos, pronto encontrarán que la parte supernatural de la historia parece bastante natural como el resto. Pero era necesario que mi línea de resumen sea sólo una de la humanidad, dado que solo estaba presentando su afirmación sobre toda la humanidad, incluyendo la humanidad escéptica. Por eso adopté el curso alternativo de mostrar primero que nadie menos un tonto nacido podía fallar en darse cuenta de que Francis de Assisi era un ser humano histórico muy real. Y luego resumir brevemente en este capítulo las superhumanidades que ciertamente fueron parte de esa historia y la humanidad. Solo queda decir algunas palabras sobre algunas distinciones que pueden ser observadas justamente en la cuestión por cualquier hombre de cualquier visión, que puede confundir el punto y el clímax de la vida del santo con las fantasías o rumores que realmente eran solo los bordes de su reputación." Así que él está diciendo: "Si después de esta introducción que te estoy dando a Saint Francis sigues a leer las biografías más profundas de él y encuentras historia tras historia tras historia de estos maravillos y milagros, no te detengas por eso, porque hay dos formas de contar la historia de Saint Francis. Uno de ellos es solo para contarte básicamente la línea de resumen como si ni siquiera conocieras a él en absoluto. El otro es para contarte la historia como si conocieras a él, ¿verdad? Y eso es lo que hace un biógrafo como Saint Bonaventure o estos contemporáneos de Saint Francis o estos cercanos, próximos contemporáneos de Saint Francis cuando están contando las historias. Están contándlas para personas que sí creen en los milagros. Entonces, si ustedes, que vienen a esto, tal vez no creen en ellos, aún no, si empezase ahí, podría estar enfadado en su desconfianza. Así que un libro como el mío, Chesterton está diciendo, tiene sentido para alguien como ustedes, ¿verdad? Empecen con conocer a Saint Francis como un hombre. Y ahora que lo conocen como un hombre y lo encuentran atractivo y ahora son en un sentido uno de sus seguidores, al menos en un sentido remoto, luego sigan a leer sobre los milagros. Y si lo hacen, ni siquiera parecerán innaturales para ustedes, simplemente serán parte de la historia. Por supuesto que estas cosas sucedieron, porque miren cuán maravilloso era como un hombre. El modo en que vivió su vida fue el milagro. Entonces, no se distraigan de esta maravillosa cosa que hizo. Recuerden que eso es sólo parte de la historia, del maravilloso que era él mismo. Sí, está bien, continúen. "Hay una inmensa masa de leyendas y anécdotas sobre Saint Francis de Assisi y hay tantas compilaciones admirables que cubrirán casi todas ellas que me he obligado dentro de estos limites estrechos a perseguir una política un poco estrecha que sigue una línea de explicación y solo menciona una anécdota aquí o allá porque ilustra la explicación. Si esto es cierto sobre todas las leyendas y historias, es especialmente cierto sobre los milagros y las historias supernaturales. Si nos fijamos en algunas historias como están, deberíamos recibir una impresión bastante aburrida de que la biografía contiene más eventos supernaturales que los naturales. Ahora, es limpio contra la tradición católica, coincidente en muchos puntos con el sentido común suponer que esta es realmente la proporción de estas cosas en la vida humana práctica. En otras palabras, todos tenemos la maravillosa incursión de Dios en nuestras vidas. Lo hacemos, si estamos prestando atención y lo notaremos. Y en la vida de un santo, el notarse sucede más frecuentemente porque es más responsivo de la gracia de Dios. Entonces, por supuesto, el miraculoso va a suceder más frecuentemente y lo notará más frecuentemente porque está cooperando mejor que la mayoría de nosotros. Pero incluso en la vida de un santo, el miraculoso es el inusual. Es su vida diaria de fastidio y oración y buenas obras que fue la mayor parte de su vida. Y los católicos dicen eso también. Sí, seguro, vamos a decir, es más fácil decir, es más fácil resumir la mayor parte de la vida diciendo: "Había mucho fastidio, oró mucho, hizo muchas buenas obras, punto, siguiente capítulo, ¿verdad? Déjame decirte sobre todos estos milagros que sucedieron, pero recuerde que los milagros fueron eventos individuales. Así que se necesita mucho tiempo para contar un conjunto de eventos individuales. No tarda tanto en resumir una vida que fue vivida de una manera ordinaria." Así que sí, si lees estos otros libros, puede obtener la impresión de que los milagros eran la mayor parte de su vida, pero no, no lo son, es solo la forma en la que tienes que contar la historia. Y los católicos dicen esto también. "Además, incluso considerados como historias supernaturales o preternaturales, obviamente caen en ciertas clases diferentes, no tanto por nuestra experiencia de milagros como por nuestra experiencia de historias. Algunas de ellas tienen el carácter de historias de fiestas, en su forma incluso más que su incidente. Son obviamente historias contadas por el fuego a los pueblos o a los hijos de los pueblos bajo condiciones en las que nadie piensa que está promoviendo una doctrina religiosa para ser recibida o rechazada, pero sólo redondeando una historia de la manera más simétrica según ese tipo de esquema decorativo o patrón que pasa por todas las historias de fiestas. Otros son obviamente en su forma más enfáticamente evidencia, es decir, son un testimonio de verdad o mentira. Y será muy difícil para cualquier juez de la naturaleza humana pensar que son mentiras." Así que él está diciendo: "Cuando lees estas historias, algunas de ellas parecerán ser un poco embellecidas por su forma, ¿verdad? Eso es solo como decimos ciertos tipos de historias, es asegurarnos de que son simétricas, que sigan el patrón correctamente, ¿verdad? Y esta es solo la forma en la que cuentas una historia. Si estás contando una historia a los niños para despertar su imaginación, esa es solo la forma en la que cuentas la historia. Y la vida de Saint Francis ofreció tales incidentes como se les debió a este tipo de narración. No que la narración sea falsa, sino que la forma en la que se cuenta es contada de tal manera debido al propósito de la historia. Esto es sólo composición, ¿verdad? Cuentas la historia de una cierta manera dependiendo de cuál es tu punto, tu propósito es esto, por lo que cuentas la historia de una cierta manera. Y esto es cierto de muchas de las historias de Saint Francis, los llaman las flores de Saint Francis, ¿verdad? Son obviamente historias de fiestas, Chesterton dice. Hay otras historias que se cuentan sobre Saint Francis que son obviamente no historias de fiestas. Son obviamente contadas como si fueran evidencia de la sala de juicio. Son o verdaderas o falsas, y cuando las lee, sabrán que son verdaderas, no falsas. Pero no están destinados a ser, como, no hay embellecimiento pasando aquí. No hay redondearlo para que pase bien, es solo, esto es lo que pasó, ¿verdad? Así que luego sigue, ¿verdad? Las primeras biografías como Saint Bonaventure, Celano y los tres compañeros. Oh, está bien, sí, entonces podemos continuar. "Se admitió que la historia de la Stigmata no es una leyenda, pero solo puede ser una mentira. Quiero decir, que es ciertamente no una acreciente legendaria tardía añadida a la fama de Saint Francis. Es algo que comenzó casi inmediatamente con sus primeros biógrafos. Es prácticamente necesario sugerir que fue una conspiración. De hecho, ha habido alguna disposición de poner el fraude sobre el infeliz Elias, a quien tantas partes han dispuesto de tratar como un vilain universal útil. Se ha dicho de hecho que estos primeros biógrafos, Saint Bonaventure y Celano y los tres compañeros, aunque declaran que Saint Francis recibió las heridas místicas, no dicen que ellos mismos vieron esas heridas. No creo que este argumento sea conclusivo, porque solo surge de la misma naturaleza de la narrativa." Ya ha establecido aquí el hecho de que cuentas la historia de una cierta manera dependiendo de a quién lo estás contando y para qué es el punto que estás haciendo, ¿verdad? Así que si estos eran hombres tratando de hacer un caso en los periódicos, podrían decir: "Vi esto." Pero no están tratando de hacer un caso en los periódicos, están tratando de contarte sobre Saint Francis. No están tratando de defenderlo contra alguien que podría desconfiar en él, porque todos lo creían. Todos lo habían visto. En el momento en que estos biógrafos estaban escribiendo, todos a los que estaban escribiendo conocían a él personalmente, o al menos habían visto a él caminar las calles en las ciudades. Sabían que era real, ¿verdad? Así que cuando cuentan la historia, solo te están diciendo lo que pasó a alguien que ya cree en lo que pasó, ¿verdad? No están tratando de hacer un caso contra aquellos que desconfían en lo que pasó, ¿verdad? "Los tres compañeros no están en ningún caso haciendo un affidavit, y por lo tanto, ninguna de las partes admitidas de su historia están en la forma de un affidavit. Están escribiendo un cronólogo de una descripción comparativamente impersonal y muy objetiva. No dicen: "Vi las heridas de Saint Francis", dicen: "Francis recibió heridas." Pero ni siquiera dicen: "Vi a Saint Francis entrar en la Puerta de Juncala", dicen: "Francis fue a la Puerta de Juncala." Pero todavía no puedo entender por qué se debe confiar en el testigo sobre el uno hecho y no confiar en el testigo sobre el otro. Es todo de una pieza. Sería una interrupción más abrupta y anormal en su forma de contar la historia si de repente comenzaran a pecar y a jurar y dieran sus nombres y direcciones y tomen su promesa de que ellos mismos vieron y verificaron los hechos físicos en cuestión. Entonces, parece a mí que esta discusión en particular se remonta a la pregunta general que ya mencioné, la pregunta de por qué estos cronólogos deben ser credituales en absoluto, si son credituales con una limitación en lo increíble. Pero eso, de nuevo, probablemente se hallará revertido en el último resort al hecho mero de que algunos hombres no pueden creer en los milagros porque son materialistas. Se han comprometido, en otras palabras, a desconfiar en los milagros por su ideología, por su filosofía preconcebida. Por eso no creen. No es porque los milagros no sucedieron y no es porque no se les dé evidencia de que los milagros sucedieron. Es porque se han comprometido a priori con el hecho de que los milagros no suceden. Pero eso no es un hecho, es una teoría. Dices que los milagros no suceden, crees que los milagros no suceden. Pero si te muestro evidencia de un milagro, o tienes que desconfiar de un hecho debido a tu noción preconcebida o tienes que deshacerse de tu noción preconcebida. Algunos hombres no pueden creer en los milagros porque son materialistas. Eso es lo suficientemente lógico, pero están obligados a negar lo preternatural tanto en el testimonio de un profesor científico moderno como en el de un cronóloga monchista medieval. Y hay muchos profesores para que contradicen a esta hora. Si vas a desconfiar en los milagros, vas a tener que desconfiar en la electricidad también, porque eso no existía antes. Vas a tener que desconfiar en los aviones, porque eso no existía antes. Si alguien venía en 1904 y te dijo que los hermanos Wright volaron un avión, dirías, si fueras un puro materialista, "No, eso no sucedió." Serías equivocado, pero eso es lo que tendrías que decir basado en tu teoría, ¿verdad? Que estas cosas que nunca he visto no pueden pasar. "Pero lo que pueda ser pensado de este supernaturalismo en el sentido comparativamente material y popular de actos supernaturales, perderemos el punto de Saint Francis, especialmente de Saint Francis después de Alverno si no nos damos cuenta de que estaba viviendo una vida supernatural. Y hay más y más de este supernaturalismo en su vida mientras se acerca a su muerte. Este elemento del supernatural no lo separó de lo natural, porque fue todo el punto de su posición que lo unió más perfectamente al natural. No lo hizo dísmo o deshumanizado, porque fue todo el significado de su mensaje que este misticisme hace a un hombre alegre y humano. Pero fue todo el punto de su posición y fue todo el significado de su mensaje de que el poder que lo hizo fue un poder supernatural. Si esta distinción simple no fuera evidente en toda su vida, sería difícil para alguien perderla en la lectura del cuenta de su muerte." Así que muchos de estos secularistas, la justificación en sus propios mentes e incluso en su propio argumento externo para su secularismo es que, especialmente en los primeros 1900, esta era la línea de justicia. No creo que lo escuchemos mucho más, aunque creo que es todavía un undercurrent en el secularismo contemporáneo. La línea de justicia es que la religión hace a los hombres preocupados con no este mundo. Y por lo tanto, hace a los hombres sin cuidar de la realidad de este mundo. Que hace a los hombres incapaces de tomar en cuenta en realidad los problemas de este mundo y buscar soluciones. Y eso es simplemente claramente no el caso con los católicos, ¿verdad? Hay una cierta carencia hacia las cosas del mundo en alguien como Quaker, ¿verdad? Él deja el mundo, su religión lo hace sin cuidar del mundo. Pero en un hombre como Francis o en un hombre como cualquier santo católico, lo hace más sensible a la realidad del mundo, porque lo hace más humano, ¿verdad? El argumento contra, el argumento secular contra la religión cristiana es que te hace, te deshumaniza. Y decimos: "No, lo cumple su humanidad. Te supernaturaliza, eso es cierto, pero la gracia construye sobre la naturaleza. La gracia no destruye la naturaleza, construye sobre ella." Sabes, un budista dice que tenemos que, sabes, unirnos al nada, ¿verdad? Tenemos que ser anilados, ¿verdad? Tenemos que entrar en Nirvana, que es la nada, ¿verdad? Ese es el punto de nuestras vidas, y una vez que se dan cuenta de eso y una vez que empiezan a luchar por eso, entonces llegamos a la paz, ¿verdad?, Nirvana. Pero se concebe como una nada, ¿verdad? Es una anilación. Y los secularistas estarían right para rechazar eso, eso es anti-humano. Pero rechacen la religión cristiana, la religión cristiana auténtica, que se encuentra en su completitud en la verdad católica, en la fe católica. Rechazan eso porque también lo piensan como un anti-humanismo. No es anti-humano, es superhumano. Somos quien somos destinados a ser y solo pueden ser por el poder y la gracia de Dios. Y eso es muy cierto, eso es muy obvio en el caso de Saint Francis, y especialmente cuando murió, ¿verdad? Cuando murió, no se volvió menos humano, en realidad se volvió más humano. Así que aquí es donde da el ejemplo, ¿verdad? Este hombre que había renunciado a casa y lugar y posesiones mientras llegaba a la muerte se da cuenta de que en realidad hay un lugar que quiere ser, y es la Puerta de Juncala, ¿verdad? Es la iglesia, es la pequeña iglesia en el valle en la que había estado, en la que había empezado, ¿verdad? En la que había empezado con esos compañeros viviendo en casas, ¿verdad? Viviendo su vida. Quería volver allí y le dijo a sus compañeros: "Nunca dejes este lugar, ¿verdad? ¿Por qué? Este hombre, la única vez que se enojó fue cuando comenzaron a construir edificios, tener casas en las que vivían, ¿verdad? Él dijo: "Esto es una corrupción de nuestro modo de vida." Y al final, él dice: "Tengo que volver a la Puerta de Juncala." ¿Es este él en la debilidad de la edad y la frayidez, aunque no era viejo, solo tenía 46, ¿verdad? ¿Está este tipo de debilidad entrando y está dando en algo que en sus días más fuertes había rechazado justamente? No, es él volviendo a ese punto de partida original. Y eso es real. Y lo que pasa con los católicos es reconocer la realidad de la realidad física, terrenal, humana. Dios lo hizo, y así no tenemos que absolutamente rechazarlo para seguir a Dios. De hecho, cuando lo ponemos a la correcta usada que Dios hizo para él, estamos siguiendo a Dios. Ahora, prácticamente hablando, esto es imposible para nosotros, pero no es imposible para Dios. Dios quiere que volvamos a ser purificados, y los santos nos muestran esto. Cuando los santos alcanzan sus alturas de saciedad, finalmente, como ninguno de nosotros, son libres de nuevo, como Adam estaba en el jardín. Son capaces, cuando alcanzan ese punto de transición, de ser y usar las cosas de este mundo libre, libremente, de una manera que no somos capaces, pero noten que les hace volver a entrar, como si fuera, al mundo de la tierra, ¿verdad? No porque se han vuelto... Because, not because they're, they're becoming reattached to earth, but because they find in it again the pure creation that God made. They find through it their way to God. It isn't our way to God, that's why we have to become detached, that's why we have to go through the, the way of asceticism, that's why we have to fast, that's why we have to deny ourselves, take up our cross, right? But if we do that, God purifies us, and he gives us back that which we had to leave behind. Real Christian asceticism, which is a leaving behind of the world, does not obliterate the world, and in the end, it comes back to the world, purified, cleaned, away again to God and not a, an occasion of temptation for us. Francis, in his death, right, asks to die naked, right? "As he came from the womb, as I came from God, so I will go to God." That's the symbolism of this, right? That's not anti-human. He's saying, "All I am is a man. All I am is a man, and I will go to God as a man." And he's a great saint. And this shows us that what the saints are is just men. They're just men, the way men are supposed to be. And the way we, therefore, can be, if we will go with God. Now, how do they become that way? I mean, in a certain sense, we, who are not saints, are less than men, right? Our sinfulness is a certain animal-ness, right? Which is inappropriate for us. It's fine for animals, but it's inappropriate for us who are made in the image of God. When we just obey our passions, when we just do what we feel like rather than what we know to be right, that's a reversion down to a lower level of, of reality. And it's the ones who are able then to do what God made them to do, who become real men. "In heaven, we will be men." And this is demonstrated even in the incarnation, that God himself made men, made a man, right, to be perfect. Jesus Christ is a perfect man. Now, that's only possible because of the gift of God. Only God can accomplish this, right? Jesus says, "For men, this is impossible, but not for God." So it's not that by trying really hard, then we can enter heaven, we can become saints, we can become what God made us to be. Only God can accomplish that for us. But God accomplishes this in such a way to make us who we're really meant to be. He's not denying our reality, he's fulfilling it. And this, again, the end of the chapter, beautiful, right? Top of 308. "What lay dying there was not Dominic of the dogs of God," that's a little pun there, "the dominicanis, right, the Dominicans, right? Domini canis is the hounds of the Lord, right, in Latin." So the Dominicans are often depicted with a dog in the background, right? If you see a painting of Saint Dominic, very often there's a dog in the background. And that actually also comes from an old legend about Saint Dominic, that his mother, either when he was a child or when he was in the womb, had a dream, a vision of a dog carrying a torch in its mouth and lighting everything on fire. And he is named Dominic, right? And, and he found the Dominicans, right, who are the dominicanis, the, the hounds of the Lord, setting the world on fire, right? Running everywhere, setting the world on fire, right? That's, so he's referring to that little, that little pun there in Latin. "What lay dying there was not Dominic of the dogs of God, a leader in logical and controversial wars that could be reduced to a plan and handed on like a plan, a master of a, of a machine of democratic discipline by which others could organize themselves. What was passing from the world was a person, a poet, an outlook on life like a light that was never after on land or sea, a thing not to be replaced or repeated while the earth endures. It has been said that there was only one Christian who died on the cross. It is true to say, in this sense, that there was only one Franciscan whose name was Francis. Huge and happy as was the popular work he left behind him, there was something that he could not leave behind, any more than a landscape painter can leave his eyes in his will. It was an artist in life who was here called to be an artist in death, and he had a better right than Nero, his antitype, to say, 'Qualis artefact perio,' right? That my death itself is an act, right? It's a, it's a stage act, it's a play." He's living his theology in his death. "For Nero's life was full of posing for the occasion like that of an actor, while the Umbrian's had a natural and continuous grace like that of an athlete. But Saint Francis had better things to say and better things to think about, and his thoughts were caught upwards where we cannot follow them in dizzy, divine and dizzy heights to which death alone can lift us up. Round about him stood the brethren in their brown habits, those that had loved him, even if they afterwards disputed with each other. There was Bernard, his first friend, and Angelo, who had served as his secretary, and Elias, his successor, whom tradition tried to turn into a sort of Judas, but who seems to have been little worse than an official in the wrong place. His tragedy was that he had a Franciscan habit without a Franciscan heart, or at any rate, with a very un-Franciscan head. But though he made a bad Franciscan, he might have made a decent Dominican. "Anyhow, there is no reason to doubt that he loved Francis, for ruffians and savages did that. Anyhow, he stood among the rest as the hours passed and the shadows lengthened in the house of the Porziancola, and nobody need think so ill of him as to suppose that his thoughts were then in the tumultuous, as they were in the, were then in the tumultuous future, in the ambitions and controversies of his later years. A man might fancy that the birds must have known when it happened and made some motion in the evening sky. As they had once, according to the tale, scattered to the four winds of heaven in the pattern of a cross and his signal of dispersion, they might now have written in such dotted lines a more awful augury across the sky. Hidden in the woods perhaps were little cowering creatures, never again to be so much noticed and understood. And it has been said that animals are sometimes conscious of things to which man, their supernatural superior, is for the moment blind. We do not know whether any shiver passed through all the thieves and the outcasts and the outlaws to tell them what had happened to him who never knew the nature of scorn. But at least in the passages and porches of the Porziancola, there was a sudden stillness, where all the brown figures stood like bronze statues, for the stopping of the great heart that had not broken till it held the world." He's setting us up here, as you read that last chapter, chapter 10, that we're going to get to in a moment. He's setting us up here for the idea that there's something unique about Francis. And it shouldn't be a marvel that it wasn't repeated, that when he was gone, something really left the world. And yes, there are Franciscans, right? But maybe, as he suggested here, there's only one Francis. There's only one Franciscan, and his name was Francis. And maybe we shouldn't wonder that no one can do what he did, because, and, and if you take this in the wrong sense, you might think, "Okay, so that's too bad for the rest of us, that no one can be a saint like Saint Francis." We cannot be a saint like Saint Francis. We can all be saints, but only Francis can be Saint Francis. And so it's not a surprise that the Franciscan Order developed in a way that wasn't exactly the way Francis himself would have done it. Not that he wouldn't have allowed it, but that he himself did it differently. These men who followed after him needed a different way of life. They couldn't literally follow in his footsteps, because the grace that was given to him was unique. He inspired men to sanctity, and there have been hundreds of Franciscan saints, thanks be to God. But none of them was Saint Francis. And when he left the world, he left the world. And it's not maybe surprising that, that the Franciscan Order afterward doesn't quite look like the life of Saint Francis. So chapter 10, or maybe we should pause there. Things you want to say, things you want to point out?
Did he die at such an early age because it was something that people usually didn't live longer than that? Or do you think that it was because of the harsh circumstances that he inflicted upon himself? Or was God just granting him entry into heaven because of a life well-lived?
Right. I don't know. It doesn't seem that he had an illness, right? So sometimes we get this idea that, that like lifespans have increased. The lifespan of human beings has not increased since ancient times. We have eliminated the common causes of death that shorten people's lives, right? Infant mortality is way down. Accidents can be fixed by doctors and hospitals, right? In ways that they couldn't have been in ancient times. Disease, we've, we've eliminated a lot of diseases or made them the kinds of things that you can survive. We've got more food than we used to have, right? So people don't die of malnutrition. But, I mean, even in the medieval period, plenty of people lived to be 70, 80, 90 years old. It happened all the time. That was, that was normal, right? People didn't become, they didn't look like what people look like when they're 70 today when they were 40 back then, right? They looked like a 40-year-old man. But people died from various causes much earlier. It doesn't seem that it was one of those that took Saint Francis. It's possible that his austerity did artificially shorten his life, that's possible. But I think, I like the last explanation, that he's finished. He's, he's ready to go to God, and it's time to go. That's, that's my understanding of, of the end of Saint Francis. And there are lots of examples of this. Saint Thomas Aquinas similarly, right? He had his vision, he stopped writing, and shortly after, he was gone. Charles Borromeo also died in his 40s. Didn't live long as a bishop, but he lived a marvelous life. There were, Catherine of Siena died at 33, I think, not, not old. John of the Cross died young. Teresa of Avila lived to be like 80-something, 85 years old, I think. So, yeah, there are lots of examples of the saints being taken early, not necessarily from any particular disease either. Chapter 10, the testament of Saint Francis, right? The will of Saint Francis. So what did he leave to the world? In one sense, doubtless, it is a sad irony that Saint Francis, who all his life desired all men to agree, should have died amid increasing disagreements. "But we must not exaggerate this discord, as some have done, so as to turn it into a mere defeat of all his ideals. There are some who represent his work as having been merely ruined by the wickedness of the world, or what they always assumed to be the even greater wickedness of the Church." So, anyway, the Franciscans have already started having disputes about poverty and ownership of property, right? And Chesterton points out that that isn't actually so contrary to the spirit of Saint Francis as many contemporary people propose, right? So in this next little section, he's going to talk about Mr. Shaw and Mr. Wells, right? That's George Bernard Shaw and H.G. Wells, who were contemporaries of Chesterton, controversialists and very secular, right? You know them from some of their literary works, right? The Time Machine, right, is, is a famous science fiction work of that time, H.G. Wells. And these are men who are avowed atheists and think everyone should be like them, right? They're, they're missionary atheists, as it were, writing in the newspapers and in their pamphlets and books, right? And at that time, this missionary atheism, that sounds like a kind of, you kind of chuckle at that phrase, but missionary atheism was a reality and is a reality today. It has kind of gone underground, but the atheists are not just like, "Everyone should be free to believe whatever he believes in, I don't believe in God." The atheists positively think that no one should believe in God. They think the world that they live in would be a better place if no one believed in God, and therefore, they try to get everyone to stop believing in God. And it's very intentional, very on purpose. In the 1800s, this militant atheism was explicit and overt, right? It has become much more subtle, right? It's, it's much harder to see in a lot of ways. But this militant atheism took its form in communism, right? And we associate communism with Soviet Russia, but communism began in the 1870 revolution in Paris. Communism comes from the word commun, right? The French word for the city of Paris, right? The Commune de Paris, right? The communists were people who wanted to rule the city free of all the interference of the government. It was the commune against the government, and it was a disaster. I mean, it was a terrible time when the commune rose up against the government, had to be put down by violent force, and a lot of harm was done to the Church in that time, because these communists were very anti-Christian, very anti-Catholic. Communism is an explicit form of atheism. In fact, it is usually defined as secularist materialism or atheist materialism. What we believe in is the material world, and that's it. There is nothing other than this material world. And therefore, and that means that even the human soul doesn't exist. And therefore, human beings are only material, and therefore, their only value is material. That's why the communists have no problem allowing literally millions of people to die in order to benefit the state, right? It's okay if 5 million Ukrainians die in the Holodomor, right? The famine that was artificially imposed on Ukraine in order to serve Mother Russia, right? It's fine, because it's just 5 million, right? Famous line from Stalin, right? "One death is a tragedy, a million deaths is a statistic." That's communism, that's the essence of communism. And it makes perfect sense if you, if you don't believe in the spiritual. If you only believe in what is material, then yeah, 5 million people die here, but it advances the industrialization of our society so that fewer people will die in the future. That's awful, but it's only awful if you understand that human beings are spiritual beings and not merely, you know, cogs in a machine. Anyway, that's to set you up for his reference to Shaw and Wells in the next paragraph. They were not necessarily communists, but they were socialists, right? Which is practically speaking, the same thing. Socialism, European socialism, is what leads to communism, right? The communists were just picking up the ideas of materialist socialism from Marx and Engels. This little book is an essay on Saint Francis and not on the Franciscan Order, still less on the Catholic Church, or the papacy, or the policy pursued toward the extreme Franciscans or the Fratichelli. "It is therefore only necessary to note in a very few words what was the general nature of the controversy that raged after the great saint's death, and to some extent troubled the last days of his life. The dominant detail was the interpretation of the vow of poverty, or the refusal of all possessions. Nobody, so far as I know, ever proposed to interfere with, to interfere with the vow of individual friar, that he would have no individual possessions. Nobody, that is, proposed to interfere with his negation of private property. But some Franciscans invoking the authority of Francis on their side went further than this, and further, I think, than anybody else has ever gone. They proposed to abolish not only private property, but property. That is, they refused to be corporately responsible for anything at all, for any buildings or stores or tools. They refused to own them collectively, even when they used them collectively. It is perfectly true that many, especially among the first supporters of this view, were men of a splendid and selfless spirit, wholly devoted to the great saint's ideal. It is also perfectly true that the Pope and the authorities of the Church did not think this conception was a workable arrangement, and went so far in modifying it as to set aside certain clauses in the great saint's will. But it is not at all easy to see that it was a workable arrangement, or even an arrangement at all, for it was really a refusal to arrange anything." In other words, the Church stepped in, and Chesterton is saying, "And did really change the dispositions that Saint Francis had made for the Franciscans after him, right? His rule for the order was such and such, and the Church said, 'We're going to scratch that one out and replace it with this,' for some of these elements of his disposition." But it may be that the only reason the Franciscan Order still exists is because of what the Church did, that it actually was an unworkable arrangement because it wasn't an arrangement at all. There had to be some disposition for property, even while we say appropriately that the friars will not own anything themselves. The friary has to exist, and that means that it has to own at least the building that it exists in. It has to own the land on which it, on which it sits, right? There has to be someone responsible for it, even if that someone is the corporation of the Franciscans and not the individual men themselves. So that's the change that was proposed. "Everybody knew, of course, that Franciscans were communists, but this was not so much being a communist as being an anarchist. Surely, upon any argument, somebody or something must be answerable for what happened to or in or concerning a number of historic edifices and ordinary goods and chattels. Many idealists of a socialistic sort, notably of the school of Mr. Shaw or Mr. Wells, have treated this dispute as if it were merely a case of the tyranny of wealthy and wicked pontiffs crushing the true Christianity of Christian socialists. But in truth, this extreme ideal was, in a sense, the very reverse of socialist, or even social. Precisely the thing which these enthusiasts refused was that social ownership on which socialism is built. What they primarily refused to do was what socialists primarily exist to do, to own legally in their corporate capacity." Okay, now let's talk about that. I've just said that communists and socialists are the bad guys, right? And he is saying, he's using this contemporary enthusiast- And he is saying, he's using this contemporary enthusiasm for communism and socialism in England of his day. A lot of people are really impressed by these ideas and are going along with them. And so he's using that enthusiasm, saying, "Look, what the Popes did was actually real socialism." What the Franciscan, and the extremists were proposing was anarchism. It was contrary to real socialism, right? Socialism says that all the goods should be owned corporately, right? That, 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 that the collective should own everything, that individuals shouldn't own anything. That's Franciscanism. That's real, church-approved Franciscanism, right? The Franciscans are the real communists, right? He's, he's using this kind of enthusiasm for communism and say, "You want to be a real communist? Go be a Franciscan." He is not endorsing materialist atheism, obviously, right? But he's using, in a very, you know, sly way, this enthusiasm for, you know, the enthusiasm of the day for this communism and socialism, to say, "Look, if you really want that, if you really want the good that is being proposed within that, what you really want is to be a Franciscan." These were men who really did own things corporately, and not individually. They had the common good as their own individual good. If that's what, and, and what Chesterton is marvelous at doing is taking the terrible deformities in the ideas of the society of his day and using them to his own advantage, like a judo fighter, right? He uses the momentum of his opponent, and he dodges it and pulls the guy off balance for his own benefit, right? He's, he's able to see, what is the good thing that is attractive to all these people in the proposals of communism and socialism today? Why do people find it attractive? If it were purely evil, no one would follow it. So what is the good thing that they want? What they want is for the common good to be really regarded as the good in our society. And this, this hyper-concentration of wealth in the hands of a few people, to the detriment of the great mass of the society, is contrary to that common good that should be the good of our society. That's all true. The solution that they then propose is, "Take by force the wealth of the wealthy and redistribute it to the poor." That's not good. That is gravely evil, right? And that will lead to the destruction of society. How, well then, well then, what's the real good that you're seeking? It looks like Franciscanism. It looks like a voluntary association of men who voluntarily give up their own individual good in order to strive after that good that comes from Christ, and produces the common good of the whole society. If you want communism, if you want the good that is being, that you think you're going to find in communism, you need Franciscanism. You need the Catholic Church. That's where you'll find the real, just society. It's not in the proposals of H.G. Wells and George Bernard Shaw. That's not where you're going to find it. But Chesterton is very good at taking the energy, the enthusiasm for a wrong idea, and using it to his own advantage. But in truth, this extreme ideal was a sent... Oh, I read that already. "Nor is it true that the tone of the Popes toward the enthusiasts was merely harsh and hostile. The Pope maintained for a long time a compromise which he had specially designed to meet their own contentious objections, a compromise by which the papacy itself held the property in a kind of trust for the owners who refused to touch it." The truth is that, so if these Franciscan, if these enthusiasts, these extremists, said, "We can't own anything, not even corporately." And he's saying, "The Pope is saying, 'Well, then, maybe I, Pope, will own all of these things and let you use it. How about that, right? Then you don't have to own anything, not even corporately.'" "The truth is that this incident shows two things which are common enough in Catholic history, but very little understood by the journalistic history of industrial civilization. It shows that the saints were sometimes great men when the Popes were small men. But it also shows that great men are sometimes wrong when small men are right." That's very interesting. He's not saying that the Popes, who he's saying are in the right on this one, were greater men than these enthusiasts. He's saying that the enthusiasts were proposing something that, in the end, would not have worked. That they were wrong. They were going down a wrong course. And that the small men were actually proposing the right way. And it will be found, after all, very difficult for any candid and clear-headed outsider to deny that the Pope was right when he insisted that the world was not, was not only made for Franciscans. For that was what was behind the particular quarrel. At the back of this particular practical question, there was something much larger and more momentous, the stir and wind of which we can feel as we read the controversy. We might go so far as to put the ultimate truth thus: "Saint Francis was so great and original a man that he had something in him of what makes the founder of a religion. Many of his followers were more or less ready in their hearts to treat him as a founder of a religion. They were willing to let the Franciscan spirit escape from Christendom, as the Christian spirit had escaped from Israel. They were willing to let it eclipse Christendom, as the Christian spirit had eclipsed Israel. Francis, the fire that ran through the woods of, the roads of Italy, was to be the beginning of a conflagration in which the old Christian civilization was to be consumed. That was the point the Pope had to settle, whether Christendom should absorb Francis, or Francis Christendom. And he decided rightly, apart from the duties of his place, for the Church could include all that was good in the Franciscans, and the Franciscans could not include all that was good in the Church." There are many ways, in other words, to be a good disciple of Christ. To be Saint Francis, or to be a follower of Saint Francis, is one way, and an exceptional way. But it's not the only way. And if Saint Francis and his followers end up absorbing the Church, then all those other legitimate ways will be lost, because they can't exist in this Franciscan Order. But the Franciscan Order can exist in the Church, so the Pope has to rule the Order of Saint Francis so that it will fit in the Church correctly. And he did. "There is one consideration, which though sufficiently clear in the whole story has not perhaps been sufficiently noted, especially by those who cannot see the case for a certain Catholic common sense larger even than Franciscan enthusiasm. Yet it arises out of the very merits of the man whom they so rightly admire. Francis of Assisi, as has been said again and again, was a poet. That is, he was a person who could express his personality. Now it is everywhere the mark of this sort of man that his very limitations make him larger. He is what he is, not only by what he has, but in some sense, but in some degree, by what he has not. But the limits that make the lines of such a personal portrait cannot be made the limits of all humanity. Saint Francis is a very strong example of this quality in the man of genius, that in him, even what is negative is positive, because it is part of a character. An excellent example of what I mean may be found in his attitude towards learning and scholarship. He ignored, and in some degree discouraged, books and book learning. And from his own point of view, and that of his own work in the world, he was absolutely right. The whole point of his message was to be so simple that the village idiot could understand it. The whole point of his point of view was that it looked out freshly upon a fresh world that might have been made that morning. Save for the great primal things, the creation, the story of Eden, the first Christmas and the first Easter, the world hadn't had no history. But is it desired, or desirable, that the whole Catholic Church should have no history?" Saint Francis didn't want his Franciscans to study. Saint Bonaventure lives during his own lifetime and becomes one of the greatest scholastics of the entire history of the Church. And if Franciscan rule had been followed the way that Saint Francis wanted it, there would never have been a Saint Bonaventure. That's pretty interesting. There had never been a doctor of the Church known as Saint Anthony of Padua. He couldn't have been Saint Anthony if he had followed strictly the, the life of Saint Francis. He followed the life of Saint Francis as a rule and a guide, but he became Saint Anthony. And he became a doctor of the Church. And that's true for so much that's in the Church. You don't all have to be the same in order to be who you're supposed to be. "It is perhaps the chief suggestion of this book that Saint Francis walked the world like the pardon of God. I mean that his appearance marked the moment when men could be reconciled not only to God, but to nature, and most difficult of all, to themselves. For it marked the moment when all the stale paganism that had poisoned the ancient world was at last worked out of the social system. He opened the gates of the Dark Ages as of a prison of purgatory, where men had cleansed themselves as hermits in the desert, or heroes in the barbarian wars. It was, in fact, his whole function to tell men to start afresh, and in that sense, to tell them to forget. If they were to turn over a new leaf and begin a fresh page with the first large letters of the alphabet, drawn simply and brilliantly colored in the early medieval manner, it was clearly a part of that particular childlike cheerfulness that they should pace down the old page that was all black and bloody with horrid things. For instance, I have already noted that there was, that there is not a trace in the poetry of this first Italian poet of all that pagan mythology which lingered long after paganism. The first Italian poet seems the only man in the world who has never even heard of Virgil. This was exactly right for the special sense in which he is the first Italian poet. It is quite right that he should call a nightingale a nightingale, and not have its songs spoiled or saddened by the terrible tales of Itylus or Prochni." In short, it is really quite right and quite desirable that we, that Saint Francis should never have heard of Virgil. But do we really desire that Dante should never have heard of Virgil? You don't get the Paradiso. You don't get the divine comedy of Dante, who was a third-order Franciscan, except that he knows his ancient mythology. He knows his classical literature. Saint Francis didn't. Saint Francis didn't need to. Saint Francis didn't want to. But if Dante had been exactly like Saint Francis, he wouldn't have been Dante. "It has been truly said that the use Dante makes of such fables is altogether part of a deeper orthodoxy, that his huge heathen fragments, his gigantic figures of Minos or of Charon, only give a hint of some enormous natural religion behind all history, and from the first foreshadowing the faith. It is well to have the Sybil, as well as David, in the Daciere." So the Daciere is the sequence of the mass for the dead, right? The, the long poem before the gospel for funerals. We don't sing it anymore. I think that's a shame. It's a beautiful poem. But right at the beginning, the poem talks about the premonition of this day of judgment, right? That was given by David, right? In the Psalms, in other words. And also by the Sybil, this mysterious prophetess in the pagan tradition, right? That's weird, that Christians are citing a pagan prophetess in the, in our religion, right? But of course, even the pagans knew that there was going to be a day of judgment. So yes, there was this premonition, even in the pagan religions, of the day of judgment. So we write it into our poem. It's right that the Daciere should have the, the Sybil, as well as the Davis, as, as well as David. That Saint Francis would have burned all the leaves of all the books of the Sybil in exchange for one fresh leaf from the nearest tree is perfectly true, and perfectly proper to Saint Francis. But it is good to have the Daciere, as well as the Canticle of the Sun. The Church, in other words, can include more than what Saint Francis could include. All right, I think we should skip ahead and finish the book. Yes?
Bring up a quote that C.S. Lewis quoted about how similar are all the tyrants of the world, how gloriously different are the saints?
Yes, that's right. That's right. It's not, the Church does not seek to flatten the saints, right? The saints are all unique, because they're all individual. Yeah, the saints are unique. The tyrants are all, are all the same. Yeah. So he, he points out that these Franciscan extremists, when they wouldn't listen to the Pope, separated themselves from the Church. And they rotted away, right? Which shows that there was, it was not possible to be Franciscans in that way, because they have to be within the Church in order to be real Franciscans. And the Church rightly kind of gave a right order to this Franciscan life. He says at the bottom of 316, "What was the matter with these people was that they were mystics, mystics and nothing else but mystics, mystics and not Catholics, mystics and not Christians, mystics and not men. They rotted away, because in the most exact sense, they would not listen to reason. And Saint Francis, however wild and romantic his gyrations might appear to many, always hung on to reason by one invisible and indestructible hair. The great saint was sane. And with the very sound of the word sanity, as a deep, as at a deeper chord struck upon a harp, we come back to something that was indeed deeper than everything about him, that seemed almost an elvish eccentricity. He was not a mere eccentric, because he was always turning toward the center and toward the heart of the maze. He took the queerest and most zigzag shortcuts through the wood, but he was always going home. He was not only far too humble to be a Haresiarch, he was far too human to desire to be an extremist, in the sense of an exile at the ends of the earth. The sense of humor which salts all the stories of his escapades alone prevented him from ever hardening into the solemnity of sectarian self-righteousness. He was by nature ready to admit that he was wrong. And if his followers had on some practical points to admit that he was wrong, they only admitted that he was wrong in order to prove that he was right. For it is they, his real followers, who have really proved that he was right, and even in transcending some of his negations have triumphantly extended and interpreted his truth. The Franciscan Order did not fossilize or break off short like something of which the true purpose has been frustrated by official tyranny or internal treason." He's pointing out there the truth that the Church gives approval to religious orders. And that has to happen during the life of the founder, of course, right? You can't start the Franciscan Order unless Saint Francis is still alive. But whether the Order is really going to continue can't really be seen until Saint Francis is gone. When there is no more Saint Francis, and especially when there is no more of the men who knew him, who lived with him, who had acquired the spirit of the life from him, when we get to the third generation of men who had to become Franciscans, having, and after Francis is already gone, if those men, when they become the rulers and the leaders of the organization, if those men can keep it going, then there must be a real spirit in this organization. There must be a real charism of Saint Francis that still exists and abides in, in the Order of Saint Francis. There have been plenty of Orders that have been approved in the Church and no longer exist. The ones that do exist, exist and can only exist because there is something of the spirit of God in them. And that spirit, the special charism, is the spirit that motivated Saint Francis. So even when Saint Francis is gone and we're not doing things exactly the way that he did them, the fact that it still exists shows that there is still something of the spirit that motivated Saint Francis in them. So they aren't different, right? They aren't... There was change, but change in the way a body changes as it grows up, right? That's what he's saying here. "It didn't fossilize or break off short like something of which the true purpose has been frustrated by official tyranny or by internal treason." The Church didn't crush the spirit of Saint Francis. If it had done that, the Franciscans would have just ended. Or internal treason. The, the Franciscans themselves didn't abandon the real spirit of Saint Francis, which is what the extremists were saying they were doing. They didn't abandon the real spirit of Saint Francis because if they had, the whole thing would have just dried up. But they're still here, so there must be something real in them. This is why we can always recognize when reform is necessary. Because when the spirit does seem to be drying up, then, oh, you know, we've abandoned the right way, we need to get back to where we were, where we started, right? We have gone astray, we've gone off the path. We've got Capuchins, we've got conventional Franciscans. There have been so many reforms of the Franciscan Order, so many reforms of the Benedictine Order, so many reforms of these Orders down through history that have been necessary because we do fall off the path sometimes. Okay. We'll start this ending, ending little passage, right? At the middle of 318, last paragraph. "For that is the full and final spirit in which we should turn to Saint Francis and in the spirit of thanks for what he has done. He was above all things a great giver, and he cared chiefly for the best kind of giving which is called thanksgiving. If another great man wrote a grammar of assent, meaning John Henry Newman, he may well be said to have written a grammar of acceptance, a grammar of gratitude." In other words, he told us how we ought to talk about gratitude. "He understood down to its very depths the theory of thanks, and its depths are a bottomless abyss. He knew that the praise of God stands on its strongest ground when it stands on nothing. He knew that we can best measure the towering miracle of the mere fact of existence if we realize that but for some strange mercy we should not even exist. And something of that larger truth is repeated in a lesser form in our own relations with so mighty a maker of history. He also is a giver of things we could not have even thought of for ourselves. He also is too great for anything but gratitude. From him came a whole awakening of the world and a dawn in which all shapes and colors could be seen anew. The mighty man of genius who made the Christian civilization that we know appear in history almost as his servants and imitators. Before Dante was, he had given poetry to Italy. Before Saint Louis ruled, he had risen as the tribune of the poor. And before Giotto had painted the pictures, he had enacted the scenes. That great painter who began the whole of human inspiration of European painting had himself gone to Saint Francis to be inspired. It is said that when Saint Francis staged in his own simple fashion a nativity play of Bethlehem with kings and angels in the stiff and game medieval garments and the golden wigs that stood for halos, a miracle was wrought full of Franciscan glory. The Holy Child was a wooden doll or bambino, and it was said that he embraced it and that image came to life in his arms. He was assuredly not thinking of lesser things, but we may at least say that one thing came to life in his arms, and that was the thing we call the drama. Save for his intense individual love of song, he did not perhaps himself embody this spirit in any of these arts. He was the spirit that embodied. He was the spiritual essence and substance that walked the world before anyone had seen these things invisible forms derived from it. A wandering fire as if from nowhere at which men more material could light both torches and tapers. He was the soul of medieval civilization before it even found a body. Another and quite different stream of spiritual inspiration derives largely from him. All that reforming energy of medieval and modern times that goes to the burden of Deus est Deus pauperum." God is the God of the poor. "His abstract ardor for human beings was in a multitude of just medieval laws against the pride and cruelty of riches. It is today behind much that is loosely called Christian socialist and can more correctly be called Catholic democrat. Neither on the artistic nor the social side would anybody pretend that these things would not have existed without him. Yet it is strictly true to say that we cannot now imagine them without him since he has lived and has changed the world. And something of that sense of impotence which was more than half his power will descend on anyone who knows what that inspiration has been in history and can only record it in a series of straggling and meager sentences. He will know something of what Saint Francis meant by the great and good debt that cannot be paid. He will feel at once the desire to have done infinitely more and the futility of having done anything. He will know what it is to stand under such a deluge of a dead man's marvels and have nothing in return to establish against it, to have nothing to set up under the overhanging overwhelming arches of such a temple of time and eternity but this brief candle burnt out so quickly before his shrine." So he finishes the life of Saint Francis, saying he's a man of gratitude. And human gratitude is to God, who has given everything, and even the act of gratitude itself seems in a strictly practical sense completely worthless, completely futile. What's the point? God has everything and everything that I offer back to him isn't really worth anything, is it? But the Catholic understands that the way you give gratitude to God is to light a candle in front of a shrine. Why? To burn some wax? Let it burn down and the flame goes out at the end? What's the point of a human life? To live and then to die? No. Death itself is our reunion with God. And it is the consummation of an infinity that is human existence. We are in the image of God, we are not just material. And when we are united with God, we actually do have something that is infinitely valuable to offer Him, which is ourselves. Not infinitely valuable because of what we are, but because of what God makes us. And that's what the candle symbolizes. That's why there is this Catholic intuition that it's right to light a candle and leave it behind. And when you come back to church, it's already gone out. But it was worth something. Saint Francis no longer lives on earth, but the spirit that made Saint Francis into a saint does still live in this earth and still makes saints, still makes, in other words, men whose lives are worthwhile to God. And that is the greatest miracle, the greatest marvel. God has made himself one of us so that we can be one with Him. Thanks be to God for Saint Francis. Glory be to the Father and to the Son and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now and ever shall be, world without end. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thanks, everyone.